Hello everyone, please be welcome to this special session for you to know how to create a smart contract. Alright, so today will be pretty different. Actually, we will focus only on those matters for you. Okay, so we will, we will be recording this session for those who couldn't make it today, but we will upload it later, so you can watch it. You can share it maybe for the, for those for your own team who couldn't make it, alright? Also, we want to remember you that I will be facilitating this session and Messi will be the one going to be facilitating the whole process and the whole know-how about the smart contract, alright? So with that being said, Messi, I will give you a word right now. Please welcome and you have the speaker.
Thank you, ladies.
You're welcome.
I will just turn on my screen. Hi, everyone. My name is Messi Randa. I'm the CEO of Tropical Finance. I have been doing smart contract development for the last five years or so. So in this session, we will tackle solidity development, basic intermediate, okay? So I have an agenda proposed. This is more like a talk discussion, hands-on workshop. So if you can follow me, it would be nice. If you have questions, it would be nice. So that's it. So I'm just, I'm gonna share my screen. I hope you can see it. I just want to give a short introduction on blockchain, just to set the basic ground where all of us can start working. So I will start work on the concept of distributed ledger technology and blockchain. This, just for the sake of the understanding, how to develop and what is happening under the hood is going to be quite simplistic. But if you have any doubt, we can discuss it, because of course I am going to present something quite simplistic, just for the sake of understanding. But it doesn't mean also that the thing is more complex under the hood and we should keep this in mind, right? So we'll start talking about the distributed ledger technology and what is it, what it is. So it's just a sort of database that share replicates and synchronize data among members of a network, yeah? And we could think about this, when we register a sort of transaction in the network, it will be recorded on the nodes that have made possible to ensure that the transaction was valid, right? And just by means of the protocol rules, this information is going to be replicated through among all the members of the same network using consensus algorithm, right? So what we can expect is all the nodes of this network having these same information. It's done by process of verification, right? Blockchain indeed is distributed ledger technology, but it does not mean that all distributed ledger technologies are a blockchain. So for example, we developers are very used to work with distributed ledger technology to version our code. All of us are very used to use GitHub or other versioning, version controlling systems. But, but just for the sake of the example, I will stick to Git and what we do through GitHub. So this is a distributed ledger technology. Why? Because of the members that have access to a repository will have a copy of this information and they can handle the information in a distributed fashion, right? What is happening in the blockchain? The idea is to be able to set a transaction in the record, right? This is the main idea. There are some things that are very important to keep track on the transaction. Those are the timestamp and others such as the direction for this, for the case of blockchain. We could also have a track of the size of the transaction and other stuff. But we could represent this transaction something like this. And what would happen is that we will have a series of transactions that we should pack in a sort of a structure. This structure is called a block. And through cryptography, we could have not only a hash of all those transactions, but also from the block itself with its timestamp, right? So the idea is that I will get more and more transactions. But before setting the hash for the second block, I could retrieve the hash for the first block and tie it to, bind into the information of the second block, something like this. And this will allow us to chain those blocks in this sort of a structure. What happens if anyone wants to corrupt the information? Well, it won't have any sense cryptographically speaking, right? So we will get an error on the chaining process, right? And just for us to keep some things on our minds while we are working with this, I would like to just talk about some cryptographic primitives. So we will have keyless primitives with random numbers, we will have hash functions, we will have symmetric key primitives and asymmetric primitives. So we could just talk about the symmetric key cryptography. It's just quite simple. It would force us to have a key that would encrypt and decrypt messages while we are interchanging messages. So for example, if Alice wants to change, interchange messages with Bob, they should have one key, then if Alice wants to change, exchange messages with Eve, they have to have another key and the same is true for Eve and Bob, they should have another key. What is happening here is that we will end up with something like this, because we will have to manage those keys somehow. Then we got asymmetric key cryptography. It relies on the fact that we will have a private key and a public key. And just for the sake of this explanation, we could say that the public key could be derived from the private key. And we should keep this in mind, because since we are going to be working on top of the Ethereum virtual machine, we should keep those concepts in mind. We will get a private key from a series of words. Those words are called the passphrase or just the phrase. Those could be either 12 or 24 keywords. And the protocol can take random words from some languages. So for example, we would, what is most common is to find these keywords from English. So anyone opening a new wallet, for example, with Metamask or something like that, will end up with 12 English keywords, but it does not mean that it's constrained to English only. I could use it through, using English, Spanish, Italian, I guess it's German, Chinese, if my memory helps me. And we will have at least six different languages that we could use these protocol, right? So starting from those keywords, we will generate the private key. And from the private key, we will get not only the public key, but another stuff like signing functions on other stuff, right? So it's pretty simple. If someone wants to exchange messages with Bob, they can get the public key. They will encrypt the messages using the public key and then...
Messi?
Yep.
Sorry to interrupt you, just to let you know that as you are the only host in this call, you need to let the other participants in, right? I think there's people in the waiting room. Sorry for the interruption.
Okay, no worries. Okay, I will keep an eye on that.
Yeah, I don't know if you can make co-hosting, by the way.
Let me, let me check. I don't see such an option.
Alright, don't worry. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, if you feel that I have to do something, please ping me, okay? Alright, thank you. Okay, so... Okay, so if anyone wants to send messages to Bob, they should use the Bob's public key in order to encrypt the information. Even if Alice wrote the original message and have the Bob's public key, she cannot decrypt it, because for that it would be necessary to have the private key. And the private key is in possession of Bob. So the only one that could decrypt those messages would be Bob. So if Eve wants to check what Alice wrote to Bob, she couldn't make it, because she only has the public key, right? And this is how it works. I don't want to dive, to dive in way too much on this concept, because it could be quite extensive and I don't want to waste our time just talking about cryptography, just to remember a few things that we could keep in mind, right? Then I will talk about the hash function. I would like to present it in this way. It's just a function that will get an input and output, will give us an output, but it will rely on, it will rely on an algorithm, right? So this algorithm could be changed in a certain manner. So I would just want to give an example. If we are using the hash function through the MD5 algorithm, we will get this output right away from the Hola text, right? But as most of us know, this is not quite reliable, because the next problem that we got is that we got a collision for MD5. So a collision does mean that the space, the output space is not wide enough to project what comes from the input, right? So we will end up with a collision in a way that two inputs could generate the same output. And the idea is to have only one output per input, right? So we kept creating, when I see, I say we, I mean we as humans, we kept evolving these implementations. So we came up with SHA3 family, where we have SHA256. And for the same text, we will get these outputs, right? And despite, we humans understand both the lowercase and uppercase version of these same word. It is dramatically, dramatically different for the hash function. So even if I change just one byte of information, the output, it's going to be dramatically different. And it is worthy to mention that this function is a one-way function. So it goes only from the input to the output. There is no way to derive or to guess what the original input was right away from the output. This must be kept in mind, right? What is the hash function good for? It could be used as a math summary. So for example, if we need to download an application, usually the author of such an application will give us the hash that comes right away from this image or so. So all that we have to do is to check its hash and compare both strings. And if those strings are the same, we can safely say that the original file is uncorrupted and it came as it is, right? This is just a short introduction on some few concepts that we should keep in mind when we are doing blockchain development, right? So that's it. Okay, so I just want to start with this workshop. Again, feel free to ask me any question, so we can tackle it. The first thing that I want to start with is with the development environment. What we can do in order to develop a smart contract, we could go to sites such as REMIX to start, to start coding, something like this. We have REMIX for Ethereum, so you will get some examples in these, starting from scratch environment. And it does work. It is very useful if you want to explain something online or something like that. But for bigger projects, it's not quite recommendable, because you will have to interact with several things. And this could be quite annoying to work with. So there are other ways to come up with a fully integrated development in your machine to start the development process, so process, sorry. So I want to start with something really simple. The first thing that I want to start with is just the console. I would like to say that we developers should care to have a development environment as similar as possible as the production environment. So since, since this is going to be quite similar to deploying to Linux servers or something like this, I'm working with a Linux host machine. So I'm working with, with Linux-based, it's the kernel 5.4.0. And I'm working with Ubuntu 20.04, which is the latest long-term support machine. But if you want to work with another operating system, I would encourage, if it's not possible to do it with Linux, you can use Mac. Most of you would know that Mac and Linux share the same base, so it's quite the same. But if anyone has Windows, it's completely feasible to work with Windows. The thing is that I haven't worked with Windows for the last 20 years or so, so I'm not quite an expert with Windows. If you feel that Windows is not the right way to do it or want to keep with this workshop, I suggest installing a virtual machine, using VirtualBox or VMware or something like that, something like that. So I'm pretty sure you can use Windows as well. So it's just a matter of knowing how to install certain development requirements, right? So I will, I will go with those requirements. So the first thing is that you have to ensure that you have nodes, right? This is the first thing. So to install a node, I would suggest using MVM. So here in the MVM repository, you will have the installing and updating script. So you just can, you can paste these comments and it will install the MVM installer, right? And it will guide you through the whole installation. Just for the sake of this presentation, I will do it myself. So I will remove my MVM folder and that's it. So it's just a matter of choose whatever you need here. So C or L or W, W get could work, whatever you need. So I'm just copying this one. Sorry. I'm using a CSH. So if you're using bash or another one, just keep in mind that you will have to pipe this to your default console, right? So you just have to do this and it will work. And that's it, alright? I hope everything works well. Then you can check if it got installed properly by just typing command minus V, MVM. If you get this text, it does mean that MVM got installed, right? And then you can install whatever you need. You can go here to the installation. Like this, so you could just type MVM install node or specify a very specific version of node or whatever you need. I tend to use long-term support versions of software. So it's just a matter of typing MVM install LTS. It loads it and that's it, right? So I already have MPN installed. It might be necessary to have other packages for your operating system. So for example, for Linux, you could install build essential that brings all the necessary stuff to compile C and C++ packages. For Mac, there is this project Xcode and Brew. And the only thing that you need to ensure is that you have C compiler and a C++ compiler. That's the only thing that you need to ensure. For Windows, I guess everything comes with all these DLLs files and stuff that Windows has. So this is just a working for people using Linux and Mac, right? And that's pretty much it. So I just want to point to an interesting project that I've been using way too much recently. It's Harhat. And I, it's not this Harhat, sorry. Harhat, it's that O R G. So this is the one. So previously, I was using Truffle. So you can do whatever. Valentin says, there is a built to shell in Linux. Yeah, usually you bring up the console by combining Ctrl, Alt and T on your keyboard. Or just looking for console in KDE or just to build a genome, it's called the Genome Console, I guess. But I don't remember very well. Okay, so we have Truffle here. I was very used to use Truffle. It was, it was quite good. I really liked it by that time. But I guess, I guess Harhat is way much better. But I don't want to enclose you to use one or another. Just want to mention a couple of things. So Truffle, it's the smart contract framework manager, so to say. Then we will have Ganesh. Ganesh could be seen as a virtual blockchain that can be used for development purposes. So you will have either the UI version, or you can get also the, the command line version. I really, I really like the command line version, so just to keep this in mind. And then they have Dresel. I never used this one, but as far as I know, it could be used to prepare front-ends really easily, right? Okay, I hope, and as I, I hope to answer this question you are asking through, through the workshop. So you can get the answer by yourself. If at the end of the presentation, I haven't solved this question, just let me know. I will, I will answer it, right? Okay, so this is the difference, but in essence, it could be the same, just the same, right? So coming, coming back to Harhat. Okay, that's good to know. Yeah, sorry. It is supposed that the commander does this, so you have to check your, if you're on bash, you have to check your, at the end of your bash rc file. I'm in CSH, so I will have to check in my, that CSH rc. I'm in CSH, so I will have to check in my, that CSH rc file. And it will install these mvm commands at the end that can be used to interact with mvm, right? Yeah. And don't forget that if you get something installed, in order to avoid closing your console and opening again, you could run the exec pound shell command and it will reload the, the, the console. So you do, you will need, have to, to close it and open it again, right? That's it. Well, coming back to, to hard hat. So this project was known as the player before. So it has evolved pretty nice since it was builder. I really like what these guys are doing with the hard hat project. So you, you have here the walkthrough tutorial and, and you can check it by yourself. But I just want to mention how to start with a project really easily because, because we can advance more quickly in this, in this example. So here you will check the setting of the environment. Basically, they are telling you that you would need to have a node installed. So if you want to check these, I, I just want to share the URL here on, on the chat. So if you want to check the recommendation made by the hard hat team, you can come here. And there is another way to install Node.js right away from the node sources. This would be more canonical, so to say. Another way to do the same with Macos. Quite the same as we have done using mvm. And for Windows, this is the only thing that you will need, just the MSI executable and that's it. Then you will have to run this if you want to upgrade. This, this has been done. And then you will have to install hard hat. I have found myself that it can be done in another way, in another way. So I will use npm. Just by the way, if you want to upgrade your npm, oh, sorry. I guess I have done this. Okay, so I just upgraded my npm by, just by running this command. Using mvm, you can check what you have installed. So you also can change between these and these and this version. So you, you only have to make mvm alias default lts slash fermion and it will point to the, the Fermion version. Okay. I will stick to a lts version. So mvm alias default lts fermion. And then I will force mvm to use the default, right? So now it is pointing to the lts, which is fermion. I haven't used gallium yet, so I will stick with fermion just for the sake of this explanation. And that's it. So the, the, the first thing is to get hard hat working first. So I have discovered myself that it could be done like this. And npm install globally hard hat. There is no need to do it, but I have found that if you get it installed globally in your machine, it's better. Then we will have to create our project. So Ludo, I guess this is a mistake because I didn't, I didn't wrote that thing as to, let me, let me show you how it's the command. So it's just npm install globally. npm, that's it. The mvm thing that you wrote before, it's was, was not correct. So let me look. Actually, it is recommending me the same thing here since I changed the, the version. I'm using Fermion now and I have done this command for gallium. If, if we remember. Okay, so we will already have hard, we will, we will have a hard hat to install locally using this command. And that's it. The, the next thing is to create the project. So I just want to create a folder, okay? So we can go, we can go to a project folder. So projects. And I, I will make this folder starting. So then I can change into that folder and that's it. It's an empty folder. There is nothing to show here. Pretty new folder from scratch where we can play with hard hat. That's it. So we can follow the, the tutorial. They told us to use Npx hard hat. And, and that's it. So it will offer us a series of options here. So I will create the basic sample project. The, the hard hat project group for this product, it's okay. If I want to change it, I could, I could do it, but I will just left as it is suggesting us. Then I will add a dot gitignore file. And it is, this is quite important. It is suggesting us to install hard hat locally for, for this project. A plugin called hard hat waffle, Ethereum waffle, chai, hard hat ethers and ethers. So I will just say yes, and that's it. It is installing the project, right? In the meantime, we can, we can just I, I can recommend to use an integrated development environment. I will suggest code, Visual Studio Code because I have found that it has the best support for solidity files and whatsoever. So, but, but you are free to use any other integrated development environment. I'm just recommending this one because it's open source. It's really, it's easy to use and very customizable. So that's it. That's the, the thing that we need to, to do. I already have Visual Codes to the installing my machine, so I'm just opening here. And this is the project that we get from the Npx installer, right? So we have a test here. So I just want to test it. So, okay. Before continue, I will show you another pretty thing that we can use here. So if, if I'm advancing quite fast, please let me know so we can make it clear in any of those points. So the other thing really nice to have is running tests on Visual Codes Studio. So okay. Abdul is telling us that he's installing Ganache. It would be nice to have Ganache as well because a hard hat, it's still compatible with Ganache. So you can use either the virtual blockchain that a hard hat has embedded or you can choose to use Ganache. So we can just install globally Ganache. That's it. It will install Ganache. So if you want to use Ganache, you can use it and we will have a virtual blockchain with Ganache here. So that's the thing, that, that's the good thing of using hard hat. You can either choose to use the embedded virtual blockchain that hard hat has built in and, or, or you can use Ganache as well. All right, so I will just paste these instructions here where we can install Mokka in the project, right? The next, the next thing is to create this file. So I'm creating this file and I want to add this information here. That's it. And that's pretty much it. The only thing that we have to keep in mind is to set shortcut for the keyboard. So I just want to copy this command here and you can open the, this command input here, paste what we just copied before, open it here with the, with the cock icon and you combine any keyboard combination. So I have for myself Ctrl, Shift, F11 to run test on, on that, right? And that's it. I will have to close Visual Code Studio just to make it take the changes. And then if I go to sample project, you will see that here I will have these two buttons that can run the, the test here or you can have, okay. This is something really needed. You will want to have the Mokka test explorer. You, you will need to install this one. So this is the extension idea. I will paste it here on, on, on the chat just for you to know that this is the one I'm using. It will open this testing explorer here. So if you come up with new tests for your test file, it will match all those, all those stats, tests here. So you can either run all of them or just one of them. So if I run the tests here, you will see that they are running. I have a problem here. It's happening. Okay, something is, okay. So let me, let me rephrase. So another neat extension that we will need is the shorthand enable to complete in order to use just HH instead of writing npm, Npx hard hat test. Because, oh, sorry, I wrote it hard hat. So the way to test your smart contracts is by using this command, but it's quite long to write. So you will have this HH shorthand and the way to install it is using this. So I will just install it. And then I just will paste the hard hat completion, completion install for my CSH console. Yes, and that's it. Don't forget to reload your console. So the next thing you want to do something, it's just pretty simple. You just need to write HH test and that's it, right? So it didn't work the last time because it couldn't find the, the, the artifact for the greeting smart contract. So of course you will need to compile your smart contract. Of course, there is nothing to compile because I already run it, run this command in my console before. So everything is there. So actually, let me show you. Since I just ran the test command here, I have created this artifact, a folder where we have the compiled version of each smart contract in the project. So you will see here all the smart contract compiled with its byte code and deploy byte code and everything we need for, for that. And since it's compiled, the test can be run from here. Right? So that's it. This is just the environment. This is just the environment for, for starting develop, developing a smart contract. Ludo is having a problem, so I just want to show you the, the extension again. Let me see if I can copy another way. This is the information of this extension is the Mokka Test Explorer. The only thing that you will need to click is in the install button and you will have these here. And this is the way to, to start it. Yeah, and Ludo is asking if both the extension test run and the HH test run did the same test suite. Yes, it does. So this is the only thing that you will need to do. And if we want to check, this is what we have done for our tests. So we assume that we have a smart contract called creator and we can get it through ethers. We'd get a contract factory, so we will have this artifact here. Then we can deploy this smart contract using the deploy function from this one. This is parameter that the constructor of this smart contract is expecting to, to get. And then we deploy and we await the smart contract is deployed. So we will get, well, we will get it deployed and then we can, we can call the create function to check if it's a text is this one. We can change the text to hello, hola mundo and then wait to, to, for it to have the same text. And this is just the test that we've done for this use case. And that's it. Okay, right, thank you. Okay, that's, that's it. This is the testing environment. There is another thing that we could do and it's after we have made sure that our smart contracts are well tested, we can actually use it, right? So let me show you how to do this. I can use a node here where we will get virtual, virtual blockchain with these 20 accounts, right? So it is running in, at the, at the right hand of my console. Whereas at the left hand, I will just deploy the smart contracts. And how it can, it can be done? So you can go here to the deploying your contract guy and it will tell you how. So this is the step that I already did. I run virtual blockchain at the right hand. Then I, I want to use the deploy script. We don't have the deploy script yet. We don't have the deploy script yet. Because the one that we have is the sample script. But it's actually what we need. And let me show you what we do here. So it will get the artifact right away from from the smart contracts that we have available here. And then we will deploy it using its constructor parameter. And then we will deploy, we will wait for it to be deployed. And then we can check the addresses, okay, right? And it would be deployed into the let me show you, into the right hand side, which is the blockchain that we want to use, right? The only thing that I need to do is to change this name to deploy that JS. And that's it. I can keep following these instructions here. So this is the way to do it through MPX. But since we already have our HH shorthand, I just can type HH run slash, sorry, dash dash network. And I'm just typing the first letters of what I need. Because the HH completion shorthand will take care of everything. So if I click, if I hit the tab button, it will autocomplete. Let me show you again. If in this case, I hit the tab button, it will offer me these two options. Of course, I will use the local host one. And then I will tell what script I want to run. So I will tell scripts deploy and that's it. The good, the thing here is to ask ourselves how HH is able to recognize what networks we do have available. And it is because the project has this hard hat config file. Where okay, I was sure this configuration was here. Yeah, sorry. But I guess there is a section here for the network configuration. But I cannot see now. Let me check here. Okay, here. Sorry, it's here, sorry, sorry. It's here in the current configuration file. So you could define your networks right away in this config file, the same I have opened here. So you can, you can define whatever you need here. But it seems like it's working with default networks. So we don't have to take care of this. But the good thing is that we can use the local host network that we already have running at the right hand. So as you can see here, the smart contract was deployed on the right hand. And you can see that smart contract address should match with the output that we wrote in the deployment script, right? So it does match. It does mean that the smart contract was successfully deployed. And now the question is how to interact with this smart contract? So I can run HH console dash dash network, local host, and this is it. I'm now on a node. It, well, it's called the hard hat console. But under the hood, it is a node console, just a normal node console that have already embedded and ready to use some things. For example, we will have access to ethers, the ethers package. So as you can see here, I got 20 accounts that I can use for my testing purposes. So I can just the construct, the, the, this array. So I can call the deployer. I can call Alice, Bob, Charlie, Eve, whatever I need. And get these accounts from ethers that get signers, right? So for example, I can I can do this, let me show you. So I have all the users here, here, so I can print their addresses like like this. So I have the addresses of all those accounts that I already created. So if you see here, those are the comments. So for example, the first one ends on 2266. This is one. We have one, 10,000 ethers for for us to to play with. We have the second one, 798, 798, and so on. So we all I can explain it again. So so I will start again. So first, I can go into the console. And then I can do this. This is a good thing. So since I already typed this command before, the only thing that I need to type is the first letters and then hit the up arrow. And then it will search through through the history log that it got on on the project. And it can keep what we already wrote. So this one is the the one that I used to get the account. So I have the deployer Alice, Bob, Charlie, and Eve account. So the next one was to set an array of addresses. And I just iterated through the users that I user is not defined, okay. So users, okay, users is is this. And then addresses is this. So I will have the addresses that I got from those users, right? So we already have the users. What can we do with the user? So for example, I can ask for the balance. As you can see here, each account is started with 10,000, 10,000 ethers. So let's check how much have each one of them. So I can type await deployer. It does mean the account I want to look for that get balance. And that's it. I have a big number. How to understand this? Well, I can cast it to number. And it has a huge number that I cannot read. So I will divide it into 18. Okay. I don't know. Sorry, I did something wrong here. It should be like this, but no, it's not working. But yeah, the thing is that it's, it's the right number now. I don't know what is happening here. Sorry, yeah, it might, my bad. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Ludus. Yeah. So yeah, we have here the 10,000, almost 10,000 from the deployer account. So let's check for Alice. So what happened here? So Alice has their ether unused. Whereas the deployer have already used a small amount. The thing here is that the first account was the account used to deploy the smart contract. That's why we, we have these balance reduced by the amount that it took to deploy the smart contract, right? So this is the first thing to to notice. And then we can get the smart contract to play with it. So the only thing that we need to get is a handler of this smart contract. But for that, I will need its address. So I will start an instant of the greater smart contract here. So I can just type greater is equal to await ethers that get contract add. So I need to specify what smart contract, what a smart contract I want to use. This one is the greater smart contract. And then its address. So this is the address I want to use. And that's it. I already have an instance of that smart contract, right? Let's, let's show the the command that I use to bring these smart contract instance. And then I can call whatever I need from this smart contract. So let's call the greater that greet function. And it is this, this is it, the greet that it already have stored. What other things we can do with this? Let me check the smart contract. So we can set the greeting. So this is a good one. So I could save the transaction. Because what I am going to do is actually to make a transaction using the smart contract. So I will type transaction is equal to await greater set greeting. The good thing is that this console will suggest you what's the command you want to type. So the only thing that you have to do is to hit the top button. And then it's parameter. Here we are expecting for the greeting string. So let's write hola mundo. And that's it. So I will, I will get information from the transaction. Let's say I can access the data, the value, the gas limit, the gas price, the gas used to deploy this transaction, the confirmation, and so on. We actually have a wait function. Since you know that everything in the blockchain could take up to 13, 12 seconds, 30 seconds, depending on the network, you will have to wait this time, this amount of time in order to, to, to have information strictly, strictly recorded on in in the blockchain. So you could do something like this. So let's call it whatever, next, for example. And it's going to be transaction that, sorry, await transaction that wait. And I will get more information on on how the transaction is going. So so it would be nice to to get this information. But this is the way you can interact with your smart contract, right? So what have we done so far? First, we got an introductory talk. Then we got development environment built for our machines. Then we tested our, the default smart contract. And then we interacted with this smart contract after doing some test with smart contract first. And that's it. The question here is how to develop for for solidity in smart contracts? So I will just leave this right now. And that's it. Well, we can use this project to start with this. So I strongly recommend. Okay, Ludus has a question here. Let me start this again. So I have the node running. Then I will run the deployment script. And the address should be this one, the one that you are getting after you run the deployment script. And I can ensure that it's the same address that you have. Because it will depend on the machine and the way the the node was started up. So that would be and you can check also here where the transaction was deployed. So it will depend on your specific context, right? Okay. Right, so let's talk about development. You can see here that the project comes with a default sampling test file. The first thing that I want to mention is that you in in the idea world, you will like to have TDD and BDD done before starting your development. Because it will ensure that your development is well done. At least it will reduce the amount of errors that you may have. So I really encourage you to to consider test and testing in general. So why? Because it's a good practice. And also despite you might think it could take more time to get your development done. All the evidence has shown that starting development projects with TDD, it's going to be better. You will reduce your errors, you will speed up your coding. Because you already know your use cases clear, right? So this is something that you should consider. How to make tests here using Chai and Mocha? So the documentation is pretty simple. You can look for chai, yes. Chai is just an assertion library for BDD and TDD, especially built for node. They have their guide here on how to to install and everything. You have the assertion styles here. Actually, those are explained here on the, on the landing page. So you have should expect and assert styles. I really like the expect style. I really like it. So you will have these kind of sentences, expect something to be whatever you need, right? So I really like this expect style. But other people likes the should, the assert, and whatever. So it's just a matter of taste. But what is important here is the API, how to change those words. So this patch should changing language is defined here. So for example, if you want to to test something, something true, to be true, you write it like here. So I expect something to be true. And they also recommend you how not to test. Something like this is not recommended. I expect false to not be true. It does work actually, but it's not recommended. It's better to use these kind of sentences. And you will have all this here. The other one is Mocha, cheers. Which is the framework for testing, right? So you have all the documentation here, but I just will give the shortcut course. So you will have this describe how to say it, encapsulator, so to say. So you could write the functions or your test in a more comprehensive way. So you can write more describe here. So for example, describe So for example, describe basic operations. And then you will have another describe for complex operations and so on. And inside each one of this, you will have the callback function where you can even have deeper describe encapsulators, right? Uh, or you can write your test directly. So for example, it should help users to say hi. For example, or something like this. And if I write something like this, the testing framework is going to understand that this is a pending implementation. Now the script should be empty, so I'm I'm required to write the callback function, even if it's empty. I will write something here. So for example, it should say complex high or something like this. And this is pending. What happens if I um run HH test? Well, everything is going to pass, but I will get two pending implementations that are the ones that I just wrote. You will see how it start to indent the encapsulator and each test inside this encapsulator. So it will depend on you, right? So you can you can do this. You also will have access to hooks. So for example, if you want a high level hook, you could do something like before, sorry, before each. Before each, sorry. Before each, and it could be an async function that you could use to start something. So for example, something like this deployer deployer. It's going to be a weight if there's that gets site nurse. Um, and and you will have the deployer um instantiated instantiated before each operation. Or you could do before each for just a specific context. So you will have access to this. So this is a a short way to how to approach TDD testing using Mocha. But I really encourage, so let me let me share the documentation as well. So first we will have chai here. And we will have Mocha here. So just for you to to know that we have here done. And that's it. This is what we have for testing purposes. Uh, now I will would like to talk about solidity development. So when it comes to solidity development, I really, really encourage you to use the official documentation. So I I just want to share the official documentation here. And that's it. It will depend on your version, something really neat from solidity. It's that it has all the compiler version available to be used. And that's because there are still some projects that are using older compiler versions. So for example, if you take a look on projects like compound, you will see that they are still using the version zero five sixteen. And this is the documentation for such a version. But you can use just the latest one or better. You could use what hard hat says here. So it got installed using the version zero oh zero eight four. So in order for everything to work as suspected, you can reach through this official documentation. That's it. You can also force hard hat to use another version. But a quick documentation, a quick advice here could be to stick to the zero eight four, which has been one of the best compiler versions that we have seen since zero four twenty three, I guess, or zero four twenty two. I don't remember which one of those is was the best one of its time. But I I would recommend to stick to zero eight four. But it it doesn't matter if you use eight four or eight five or whatever. Just keep on mind that if you are developing for a certain compiler version, you should stick to that version. So that's it. Then you will have here all the all the information that you will need. So I would like to start with the structure of a smart contract. So this is the way they recommend to store. Now, let me, let me. Sorry, this one, the layout of a solidity source file. So you will have the SPDX license identifier, which tells what what's the the license that you are using for your smart contracts, then the pragmas, then the version pragma and on other stuff. So let's let's start doing our very own first smart contract here. So I will start with a new file that I will call layout. That's all, that's it. Um, and I can open the greeting here just to use it as an example. So hmm, so if you write SPDX on this all the studio code, you will get these. It's very handy. So you can choose whatever SPDX license to use, whatever you need. Um, then it comes to Pragma. And it will tell us what version of solidity you have to use. If you refers to the Pragma, uh, let me, let me check the structure of our smart contract. You will see something like this on the documentation of solidity. And let's understand this. This is uh, if I use this version of the Pragma solidity, I'm saying that this is smart contract is able to run, to to be compiled by these range of compilers. So ranging from zero four zero and greater up to things below zero nine zero. But this is not recommend. So the next way is just to say that any zero eight something version is available, just like we have here. But if you are running a security audit report, it's probably that you are going to be told to stick to a very specific solidity version. This is really, really important, right? So it's okay. Let me check something here. It's a zero eight four. So we are okay. So you should stick to that specific version. Then you will have um, let's check the solidity source file. The import. So for example, if you would like to inherit or import another smart contract, you could use the import statement, right? So something like this. So let's say that I need to use the greater, the greater smart contract. Right? So I can import it here. And I could even inherit from this smart contract. Uh, then uh, if we have clone any GitHub repository, we can use this in this fashion. We could import um. We could import um a file from something that we have installed locally, like this repository. Um, this is this is also possible. Um, what else? And that's it. Let's take a look on this structure of smart contract. And then we can start with the smart contract itself. So I will use the word, the reserved word contract. And this is going to be called layout. And that's it. This is our very first smart contract. Since I'm importing the greeting, the greater smart contract, it's also possible that I can inherit from it. So layout, it's now a greater. And if I want to deploy this one, I have a question from Abdul. Sorry, this is sticking to one version. Um, is better for the security of the contract? Uh, yes. And the the reason is because because if if you stick to a version, um, you are using just one version of the compiler. And you will get no problem at all by using that compiler version. Uh, also because it will be easier for the security audit team to check what's the best or what's the proper documentation they have to look at when they are doing the security audit report. Why? And I I will take advantage of these inheriting structures that I said here. Let's say I I'm using the zero four twenty, sorry, the zero four twenty three version. So what happened if I want to overwrite the grid function? The only thing that I have to do is function greet uh public view and do whatever I need to do here. So for example, I can return the greeting uh, or or something better. Let's hide something like this, because these will returns a string. Returns string memory. And that's it, right? So let me move this here. So in this version, I'm using this way to overwrite the the parent read function, right? But what happened if I am using zero eight four? This is not possible. So I would have to state this like virtual public, okay, I yeah. This should, this one, the the parent, it's saying that it could be over overwrite really, right? And then the the inherited smart contract has to specify this function as override. So sorry. Yeah. So depending on the on the solidity compiler version, um, you will get different syntaxes for each method. So it's better to stick to a single version in order to do this, right? Okay. So I just want to stick to a simple version of the layout smart contract. Because I want to explain something first. You will have here types. So you have value types, so you will have things like Boolean. So you can specify them as Boolean. So you will have full uh flag, for example, right? So this is the first and most simple data type. And you will have integers. Integers are very interesting because you will have two flavors. You will have in uh unsigned integers, right? That can range from eight up to twenty to fifty six bytes. Bits, sorry. Um, so for example, I can use this one or this one or this one. And if you left just the word int, it's an alias to integer two hundred fifty six. So something like this. You also have the unsigned flavor of integers. So you will have the same. You int eight, eighty or whatever you need. So if you left you int, it's the same as saying you int two fifty six. And this is an insane number. Those are the integers. Um, it's worthy to mention that these integers are starting from eight. Uh, but you don't have nine, because it is using steps of eight. So eight, sixteen, maybe thirty two, sorry, thirty two or sixty four or whatever, always in steps of eight bits. So two sixty, two fifty six, right? Those are integers. We have a fixed point numbers. So these are either fix fixed or unsigned fixed. And they will comply with uh this form MXN. So I could say uh, one twenty eight or two. If I left you fix, it's an alias to you fix two fifty six X. And then the precision of the number. So let's say eighteen decimals as um as a precision. But there is a problem with floating point numbers in in blockchain, in in solidity and Ethereum virtual machine. Where whereas you can use it in the code, they cannot be stored. So this is useless. That's why you will see smart contracts. Now, for example, the ERC twenties that have eighteen decimals. But it's not like they have eighteen decimals. They are actually huge numbers. So for example, if you want to present the number one, you will have uh you int one, it's actually one to the power of eighteen, right? So this is tricky because you you have to be very careful with your math. Uh, actually, there are a lot of uh tools or libraries or yeah, libraries that will help you to do a safe math. So for example, if you want to to multiply your number, there is a limit because you will you will hit the the limit of the integers, which is to um hmm, to the power of two fifty six minus one. And of course, this is this being the limit will leave you with a short range of operation. So if you want to multiply one of those number numbers, you will have up to three times the operation. So for example, you want to make something like your number, right? Uh, times or better like this. Let's suppose there is a secure library times uh number number B, right? And if we think number is a And if we think number is uh uh. A number with a a power uh of eighteen and these uh as well. This will leaves us with a number to the power of um thirty six. And then we will have to correct this by just dividing uh by uh one to the power of eighteen. Just to uh ensure that we have a a better multiplication uh scenario. So you you should be careful on on this. Actually, there are uh a. Uh a really nice project I really like, which is OpenSublime. They have their smart contracts. So if you want to get started with them, the only thing that you have to do is to install these in your project. So that's it. Oh, sorry. That's it. Uh you're installing the OpenSublime's smart contracts. What you can do with those smart contracts, can you, you can, you can check that in their documentation. So for example, eh gee, you can actually start with an E R C twenty smart contract. So they have everything defined. Let's check the API. So they have an interface prepared for that, which complies with the A R C twenty specification. So you don't want, uh you you want need to specify everything by yourself. The uh standard will require you to specify these functions. So just by uh doing this, um let me show you here. Uh you will have um open settling smart contracts here. Uh token, for example, E R C two uh me. And you will have the either the E R C twenty interface that specifies the the operation. And its implementation. So you will have a full uh smart contract. That in a implement this interface. So you don't have to uh to worry about uh everything at all. You do have everything here. So you can use the balance of the transfer function, the allowance and everything. And this all be uh these smart contracts have uh fully audited. So you can rely on them to uh to start with your um. With your developments, but they also have uh utilities such as math. So for example, we have this library called Safe Math, right? So if one, if I want to multiply uh uh two int numbers. Uh this uh library will ensure that your um multiplication is uh properly done, right? So if something uh goes run, it will uh just uh let you know. Because you are getting a bull, a a Boolean and and the number. Uh and and this Boolean will tell you, will tell you if the operation was successful uh or not. So for example, um if E is zero, if uh there is no need to multiply. So it's just uh valid and then it returns zero. Uh but if these um. Cannot be proved, then you will get a false and a zero either uh. Otherwise, you will get a true, meaning that the operation was successful and the result. Yeah. So you you should try to use this kind of libraries because it will ensure that your math is safe, right? And so, yeah, uh you you can use that. I don't know if that's clear. But we can go back here. So uh it's just uh something to mention. So don't don't stick to the fixed point numbers because they are useless. Then you will have address. This is, this is one of the most useful native data type uh data types in the solidity. Uh uh language. So you will just define it uh through address. And let's say we have an owner of this smart contract. Address is special because it has two flavors. This is a plain address. So you you can uh have si- uh simple operations over this uh uh state variable. But if you want these address to have all the transactional power, you can. Uh specify it as payable. So now I can transfer money to this account and do these kind of transactions. And it can be seen here in these note. Uh you also have other contract types. So for example, I can, I can. Say I have I read to uh. Smart contract embedded into this one. So uh if I were have to have a function here, so function uh greet. I could do something like this because I have this smart contract as a data type available through uh my definition. So I could uh uh call the eh this is more contract uh functions. There is something that uh you must be aware, which is the eh eh. E I P one hundred seventy specification, which is um. Uh contract code size limit. It says no smart contract can be uh higher than. Uh two to the power of fourteen plus two to the power of thirteen. Uh it's roughly twenty four kilobytes. And this is just to prevent attacks. If you want to uh get more insights on the rationale of uh this decision, you can uh go to these uh. Um um side to check what was the reason to uh constrain the uh the smart contract size limit. So what I'm tell uh bringing this, because of course, if you check the size of the eh. Greater a smart contract, you will have its full size embedded into this one. So uh it doesn't matter that this one is a simple smart contract. Just by bringing this smart contract here, you are uh increasing this uh smart contract size. So you should be aware of this. Um but of course, in in this context, twenty four kilobytes, it's going to be way too much. So you can do this kind of this um. Most of the times quite easily without problems. But uh I just want to mention that you will get these kind of problems if you don't take a look on on the smart contract size. Uh fight size by the race. So you can have um bytes as well. Uh that's a good question. Ludo is asking, does including uh existing E R C twenty token mean that we include full byte code of the specific token? Yes. And this is a great question because um. Let's say that we want to interact with a smart contract. So let me, let me show you this. So I can import. Uh smart contract here. I don't remember how to do this. I guess it's like something like this. Let me, let me check this um. I guess the only thing that I need is this. So if I'm telling that this is um. That I want to interact against one smart contract, let's say the R C E R C twenty. So uh let's say I have this E R C twenty type here. Let's talk eh call it token. And I want to interact with this. Let's for example, say that I have a function here. I call on uh mint or something uh. Mint um. This is just public by by the moment. I can do something like token dot mint uh account uh owner and amount. That's it. Yeah. In this case, it's as you are saying, I'm uh loading the whole E R C twenty uh byte code. Into the layout smart contract. That's why we prefer to use uh E R C twenty, eh sorry, interfaces. So you can see here that um. This uh E R C twenty uh has, okay, I may- maybe I use um. Um put something like this, uh returns uh unit uh balance. This is, this is better. That's it. This is, this is a better example. Yeah. So if I want to um, uh and this is balance, that's it. So uh this is a better example. So if I want to uh get the balance of these uh user for that specific token. I'm loading the whole uh E R C twenty byte code into the layout. But as you can see here, the balance is just um uh uh. An operation that has to be implemented just because these interfaces commanding to. If you take a look on the R E R C twenty, you will see that this E R C twenty is inheriting or uh it's uh implementing. This interface. So you will see here that we have the proper implementation of the balance of function. So a better way to do this would be just loading the interface, right? And then this token uh is not necessary to be the E R C twenty at all, just its address, right? So. Instead of doing something like this, I can do something like return. Uh E R C twenty, which is the uh interface. Then I eh pass it uh uh the token address. And then I can access the method that I need to use. So that's it. In this way, I I will use uh the, this can be seen as smart contract. Uh sorry, uh the E R C twenty can be seen as a smart contract. It's just an interface. But this byte code is way much uh lower than the E R C twenty byte code. So this is a way to reduce this smart contract. So you're not loading the whole E R C twenty byte code, just uh its interface. And uh you are loading less byte code in in this case. But you will have access to all the uh functions that these uh um interfaces force you to have, right? So of course, if you write a new uh function here, that it's not specified in the interface. You will, you won't have access to it through its address and uh interface, right? It it must be stated into in into the interface as well, right? So I guess the the idea um. Yeah, uh I guess I I have a question. I get a question, sorry. Okay, so I guess uh the idea is um, it's clear. You you can uh use um value data types and that's it. Um I guess we have covered hmm most of the basic intermediate uh development. I don't know if uh we we have ten minutes left. So I don't know if we would uh throw me a question. Uh such as the one that Ludo made already. This was a really nice question. This is a pretty neat way to reduce smart contract sizes. Okay, so I I I will just continue while I get more questions. So thi- these are the pretty simple um. Data types. You will have also arrays and structure. Ludo is asking if we need some simple application which has been probably already coded. How can we find such soul A P P code? For example, to look E R C twenty token and claim it by user. And if it's not claimed, return to the original owner. Okay. Okay, um. I I really don't know how to answer these, maybe um. Maybe if you go, for example, to EtherScan. And let's say you don't have an address, uh a a smart contract address, you can look for it, for example. Let's say I want to, I'll look for the E N S. Tokens. Maybe something like this, that you will have access to smart contract this for for this special token. And usually, these smart contracts have been audited and also are fully transparent. So for example, you will have uh access to the smart contract. So. You will have access to everything, um but. Yeah, this one is better. Yeah. So you have access to the whole smart contract uh source code. So uh you have its address here. Uh and you will have all its byte code. I don't know if this is what you mean. Probably I I. I did not understand very well your question. Yeah, thi- this would be a way to to find uh a smart contract uh source code. For the ones that uh. Are already deployed and verified. Yeah, um well, I guess it's just by means of doing this. I I still. I get a thing, I still don't think I'm understanding your question. By use case, um I don't know, maybe, maybe if, I don't know, if uh since I took the E N's. Uh E N S uh token, maybe you can find the E N S uh white paper. Uh so. So this is the N S. Maybe here you will find more information about how the E N S token does work and everything. So maybe you will find the very specific use cases through their documentation. I don't know if this is what you mean. Okay, so, okay. So, yeah, the these are some things that you should consider through for for your development. I I just want to finish uh some uh more um. Elaborated data types. The, this could be, and and others that are uh value data types are. This could be and and others that are value data types are just the same thing. You also can create a struct. So for example, person. Would have a string name. String, this is first name, this is last name, the age, age. They will have. Is a bool, is alive. And you can build a person's structure. Actually, you keep. You can mix this one with other more elaborative reference data types, which are the, sorry, the mapping types. So you could actually. Copy declarations, so you can go from address to person. Here, something like this. So you will have people. So if you. Have the function person will have probably the string memory name is this name. String memory name. Wind eight. Age. Ball. Is live. And this is public. And then we will have. We will have. Something like, something like this. Okay, we have more five minutes more left. And. I just want to finish with this one. Yeah, something like this. So 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 you can actually have people tied to their addresses through the message that sender. This information is coming under the hood because what we are doing every time that we are calling functions is just sending messages. So we will get this message. So let me show you. Units and globally available variables. So you will have all this information here. So for example, you will have all these special variables built in into the language. So for example, if someone is consuming one of our smart contracts function, you will have access to this message. So you will have access to the data, to the sender, to the signature, to the value and so on. So just by leveraging on that, I can know who is sending me this information. So I can store their information in a proper structure. So I will add them, add their information to this structure. Another thing that it's worthy to mention is that maybe we want to have access to this property. So I easily could write a function, which is called get token address or something like that. And it's public view and returns. Address, the address. Something like this. And then we return token. Yeah, so but writing this is quite cumbersome. So maybe you also could consider using the public. Accessor, so you won't need to use the or or write a specific getter. Just by stating that these variables is public, you will have a built in getter for such a property. So in order to reduce smart contract sizes, you will want to keep them all private. Private is here the default. So I could write something like this, but it's the same just as writing nothing. Because private is the default scoping that it's given to them. These state variables. So you could consider both these as well. Okay, and this has been everything for the moment. I would like to help you more if you have more questions and that's it. So I left you with Davis.
Thank you, Messi, and thank you, everyone, for joining. I hope you really enjoyed and learned a lot about this special session we made just for you. Remember, we have another session right on Tuesday. So we will let you know over Discord, the exact hour in the ceiling where you can join us, all right? Sorry for the question, but if you have more questions, please join Messi's. Discord account, so you can ask him directly. If you may share your Discord user, that will be amazing. Mr. Messi and everyone, thank you so much for joining. That will be all for us today. Have a nice weekend and see you over Tuesday, all right? Thank you, bye.